We don't have any awards and proclamations today, so we'll proceed to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on an item that does not appear on today's agenda. Please identify yourself by your first and last name and let us know what city you're from and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you.
Norman Manslona, Kansas. The Jerry Ivy Park green algae issue, this was preventable. We've known about this for three years. Why didn't the responsible parties that are in charge of this prevent this? This was preventable.
Thank you, Mr. Mantle. Just having, I don't want to, I don't want to like get into a whole discussion right now, but we are aware of the problem. And that's one of the reasons why we assembled a, both a, a design group to take a look at solution or redesign of the Jerry Ivy Pond versus perhaps removing it and I'm sorry?
Again, I'm going to reiterate, that was preventable. We've known about this for a long time, this issue. And it don't take that much, it wouldn't have taken much money to prevent it, to make, take action to do something.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this afternoon?
Dalton McDowell, Salina. Um, I was going through some of your codes on landscaping, whatever. With the drought conditions that we've been known to have here in the last 20 years, it'd be nice if you would switch up what you require and how much you require of stuff. So we can do a more drought resistant landscaping instead of your fescue grass that takes like two inches of water a week. It'd be nice if you could possibly switch some of that up so we can save some water and conserve some water.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDowell. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this afternoon?
Excuse me, Standby Quistline, Kansas, 2601 South Ohio. Um, I would like to commend everybody that was involved with the city and private parties for letting this lead sled event happen. It, it was wonderful and I want to thank you everybody.
Mr. Byquist, I'm so glad you did. I had it to bring up under other business to thank all the, the parties involved because I know it took a lot of effort from KKOA, city staff, volunteers, and I really, really enjoy seeing all those old cars on the streets of Salina. And it was nice to see all of our businesses and restaurants packed. It was great.
And I talked to many of the, the people that came here, some from as far away as California for the first time drove their cars and they absolutely enjoyed it. So thank you, everybody.
Oh, great. That's so good to hear. Thank you, Mr. Byquist. Is there anyone else here today who'd like to speak?
I'm Sherry Harp from Salina. And as you probably know, that we have completed our petition and our signatures around town for them, for any overreach that the city might have. Just want to reiterate with people, we could have had a whole lot more signatures had we have spent more time, but we just felt the urgency to get that done and get it in to have it checked out. And we have the 2,100 signatures plus. So take into consideration some of the things that are coming up in the future with the scare of the COVID again, I think is on TV and it's on radio and stuff that we're just not, there's probably a lot of flu cases and some other things that are involved here too. It can't just be COVID. And just remember that people have been getting their shots and we would just like the, to be aware of the amount of people that we had come out and expressed their opinions of their freedoms in Salina. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harp. And just following up on something that you said, thanks to everyone who's gotten the vaccine. And we would just encourage all Salina citizens to take, take advantage of, of the opportunity because we had 85, I think, new cases in Salina last week. Is there anyone online who would like to speak? With that, we will proceed to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 19, 2021.
Is there, does anyone want to pull the minutes from the consent agenda? And if not, I would
Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of July 19, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of July 19, 2021. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 7.1.
Item 7.1.
Thank you so much. Thank you for raising your hand, Mr. Strig. I even drew a line under Citizens Forum and I still didn't make it happen. We have been presented with an additional item for today's meeting and I will let Mr. Strig bring everyone here up to speed on what that is.
Sure. Assuming that you place it on the agenda, we can provide a staff report to give us the background. But as you know, we've been in conversation with Salina Media Connection, had a conversation as late as Friday afternoon with them and, and we're asked to expedite this item. So staff's done that. We ran into a technical difficulty with the, the third party software that we use to send that notice out to our distribution list. So rather than treating this as an agenda item that staff initiated and put on your agenda prior to the meeting, we're presenting it to you and you would need to add it to the agenda as a, as a recent amendment if you wish to take it up today.
And how would we characterize this?
The, it doesn't necessarily have to be item 7.2, but approval of the determination that Salina Media Connection has provided adequate documentation with regard to listed non-city funded assets.
And we just say we want to add that, we would like to amend the agenda to include that at this point. And then we would have the staff report?
Correct. If you have an opinion about where you want it on the agenda, as part of that amendment, you could place it on the agenda.
Mayor? I move we replace the item on the agenda. Has second.
Okay. And was that motion including as item 7.2?
It's
Where it's ordered? No, that's
You'd like to place it here.
7.2 is fine. We have a motion to add item 7.2 to today's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we'll back up and we'll go to 7.1.
Item 7.1, authorized publication of notice of budget hearing for the 2022 budget, which sets August 9th as the date for public hearing on the 2022 budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2022 budget.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. State statute requires that we hold a public hearing to allow citizen input on our, our budget. And we have to give 10 days notice of that public hearing. So today's action is to get, get permission from you to actually make that publication. Along with that, we are setting our maximum ad valorem tax that we can levy. The, the maximum levy that we have been directed from you is 30.452, which is the neutral, the revenue neutral rate that was provided by the county. That revenue, that mill levy will provide about $10.8 million in taxes that would go into the 2022 budget. The next steps for the budget would be this budget hearing and the first reading of the adoption of the budget on August 9. We'll have the second reading of the adopt, of the ordinance for the adoption on August 16th, along with the comprehensive fees and the pay classification and salary schedule. Once that's adopted under second, under the second reading of the ordinance, we'll submit that to the county. And then in the fall, sometime around October or November, we'll come back to you with the CIP, the sub-CIP and the water and wastewater rates. There's no financial implication on this, but the request is that you authorize us to publish these in the paper for August 9th budget hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Pack. Any questions for staff? Any, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from the public? And I don't see any hands raised online, so I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor Hodges, I move we authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2022 budget, which sets August 9th as the date for public hearing on the 2022 budget and establishes the maximum limit for the 2022 budget.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2022 budget, which sets August 9th as the date for the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and takes us to item 7.2.
Item 7.2, approve the determination that Salina Media Connection has provided adequate documentation with regard to listed non-city funded assets.
Mr. Strig. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Wood, but I have late breaking information. By way of a phone call at 3:59, so I'm sure we'll be tag teaming this a bit.
Whoever wants to start, go for it.
I'll go for it. Mayor Commissioners, Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood. This item comes kind of in response to our discussion we had last week. Last week, the, the Commission determined that we should send a letter to Salina Media Connection that kind of outlined three things that we need to move forward with the recently terminated agreement. The first of those is a transfer of all city funded assets from Salina Media Connection to the city, including equipment purchased with funds received from the city and all unexpended funds received from the city. The second item is examination of the city's legal obligation in response to SMC's delivery to the city of a list of equipment they would like to keep. And the third item is the city securing and utilizing the space in Memorial Hall that SMC has been operating and managed their video production facility. So that letter, kind of detailing, very detailed letter, eight, eight or nine pages about how we would like to move forward in that process was sent and delivered to Salina Media Connection on the 21st, which was last Wednesday. On the 22nd, we received a letter from their legal counsel. It's included in your packet. I'm not going to go through the, the whole thing. But the basis was they, they really wanted to set a meeting with us on Friday to kind of discuss how we would move forward with this. So we had a meeting with them to kind of go through things a little bit, talk about how we were going to manage their time in the facility and how we were going to manage. They, they have some ongoing commitments that they would like to continue to, to try and fulfill. And they think that they can do that with some of the equipment that we provide them as part of the requests that they originally sent us. And in your packet, you'll see there's a request that they sent us a couple of weeks ago, I think around the 15th, they did provide some additional documentation with that. The agreement that we have with them or the, the former agreement said that basically all city assets or all assets over there are considered, considered to be city funded unless they can provide documentation that show that they weren't purchased with city funds. And so they've done that for some things. And what we're here to do tonight is to, to get your approval, to release those, that equipment. So right now they're, they can't take anything out of, out of Memorial Hall. They would like to take some of that equipment out so that they can use to fulfill their ongoing obligations. I'm going to share my screen here. This is not posted online just yet. So I want everybody to see what the list looks like. I've only got 43 things to do here. So this is a list of equipment that we believe they provided sufficient evidence that shows that this was, that was purchased with funds that are not city funds. So there's several grants, the Earl Bane Foundation Grant, Greater Salina Community Foundation Grant, another grant from the Department of Kansas, another, some William Graves Foundation, and then another Earl Bane Foundation Grant. So this is just a list of all the equipment that they've said they purchased with outside funds and they did provide documentation that shows that that's the case. So, so tonight, what we'd like you to do is to approve this list so that we can check it off and allow Salina Media Connection to have that going forward. I, I do want to mention there's some additional equipment that was on that list. There's another three grants. One was the James R. Allen Family Fund Grant, $4,800. Salina Regional Health Foundation Grant and a personal donation that are listed there. And then there's a part of an Earl Bane Foundation where they provided a little bit of documentation, but not enough to, to show this piece of equipment. So, so there's three items there that we're pulling from the list that they submitted earlier and I will go back and ask for additional clarification on those items. I did want to mention that there are some items that are listed here that are, that were put into room 107 that are, that are used as part of the, the public casting. So that's this, this set of items here from the Earl Bane Foundation. This was all purchased last year and it's installed in this room. So that's something that we'll have to work with, with Slime Me Connection. It is, it is purchased with outside city funds. So it is something that we should release to them. We haven't had any conversations just yet, but we're, we're working towards that. We'll, we'll figure something out on how that works, whether we give it back to them or, you know, offset some funds or something like that. But we'll, we'll work forward to that in the future. There are a couple of other things that, that are still outstanding. We haven't come to an agreement on the fund balance just yet. They have indicated that they're going to try and find a new location to operate out of. They'll be taking the equipment that we approved here and then any of their files and folders, that sort of thing, so they can continue to have that to, to a site that's not Memorial Hall. Not exactly sure when that's going to happen, that they indicated it could happen as early as tomorrow. So we're continuing to work for it. I think we've made some progress in the last couple of days and this is just the next step in that process. So you have a couple of options here. You can approve our determination that SMC has provided adequate documentation to declare the listed items as non-city funded assets. And then we'd also ask that you give the city manager authority to approve those ongoing requests in the future so we don't have to bring everyone back to the city commission. Don't anticipate that they're going to be larger than the city manager's purchasing authority. Maybe if we add them up over the time, they might be, but there, there don't seem to be real big purchases at this point. So with that, I would open it up to any questions and if Mike has late breaking news, I'll let him dig, dig into that. A couple of data, have had conversations with their attorney today and took a call right before the meeting started. One of the questions, well, two of the questions we had for them were whether they figured anything out in terms of an alternate location and whether they need to be in on Tuesday. They're still working on that, but they do think that they'll be physically, at least packing things up, whether they take them out of the building on Tuesday or not. So I think unless you tell me otherwise, I'm going to proceed as if staff has discretion to work with them in terms of their access to the building and removal of approved equipment. We will do so on a basis of having a stat, city staff person there to, to be in the building and coordinate that and supervise that. And then also they indicated a willingness to, a recognition that some of that equipment that was grant funded is essential to casting the meetings and at least a willingness to not remove that at this time and so we can have additional conversations about the value of it, whether it has value to both of us, how we might sort that out. So there, I think we're all doing the best we can to try to work together. She did share with me, it looks like they, they expect that they may be in the building remainder of the week trying to pack things up. And I honestly don't know how much more research they'll have to do in terms of documentation and how long that process might take. But, so kind of recapping, we're comfortable with what, what Mr. Woods described as having been sufficiently documented to recommend that to you. I don't want to characterize the other items as necessarily denied, other than then for the purpose of the agreement, we do need to communicate a response to them in a timely manner. So I, I expect they, it's probably likely that they'll be able to find additional documentation on those other items in this staff report. I expect that there may be other submissions, but I think, I think the focus is on grants that they've secured and equipment they've been able to purchase with it. So, and then we'll just have to see how well we can sort out in terms of the equipment that was grant funded that's, that's useful for broadcasting our meetings. In the event that it's needed by them, then we'll have to replace it. In the event that it's not needed by them and that we can come to some type of an agreement, we can talk about compensation or some, some other pieces of equipment that have value to them and not us maybe.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff?
So we are able to match the grants up with invoices on the, on the pieces that we're purchasing as part of the?
Yes, for, yes, for, for these, for these ones that I've highlighted. It's all documentation provided by them, but they have grant award documentation combined with invoices that seem to match.
Glance and had, again, haven't had a chance to review that, but none of this equipment will affect our broadcasting, our current meetings, correct?
No, it, some of it could. The, the Earl Bane
The first amount that we've, we're, the, of the $29,000 worth of equipment we're giving them, does any of that impact our?
Yes, it does. There, there's about $11,000 worth. That last, the stuff that says is funded by Earl Bane Foundation Grant in 2020, that is all equipment that came into this room when they upgraded the cameras and did some, some different audio things. So it is all equipment that's, that's in 107 right now. And then there's another piece of equipment that, that they purchased from Cox. That's part of the, it's called the peg encoder. That is, I think that's located across the street, but it's also something that would impact our, our ability to cast. So, and I want to be sure to characterize it correctly. They've indicated a preliminary willingness to not remove that equipment immediately and to continue to have conversations. My intention is to discuss with them whether it has value to them and whether, you know, we can agree on some form of compensation or equipment trade, or whether we just need to replace it at our expense.
Any other questions? I guess I, I just had a couple. The first is, has Salina Media Connection been notified that we are requiring additional documentation for the funds from the Allen Family, Salina Regional Health Foundation and Earl Bane Foundation Grants from 2020?
No, they have not.
Okay. And because our software wasn't working, they may not have got, received notice that we were going to take this up today. Or, or did
By way of verbal conversations, they, they were aware, but we haven't, haven't gone into this detail. It was at their request that we expedited the review and brought it to you. And there's a recognition on their part that and some of this may not be approved and may require additional documentation, but we haven't gone into this level of detail with them yet.
Do you have any sense for the length of time and especially the amount of staff time it's going to take to complete an inventory and go through all of the equipment that, that we need to go through?
Yeah. So today we conducted a video inventory with them jointly with Slime E Connection. That was part of our conversation on Friday. So we do have documentation of everything that, that they have by way of video. Now, we don't have, I mean, that's basically walking around the facility, pointing things out. We don't have things serial number by serial number. If we were to get into that kind of detail, it's going to take a, a great deal of time, but I think the video inventory will serve our purpose for, you know, we'll be able to see what's there and what's not. So I'm, I'm not anticipating that we'll go through it line by line unless it gets to the point where we really feel like that's necessary. Hopefully that's not the case, but, but we'll do it if we have to and it will take a significant amount of time. I mean, there's a lot of equipment.
What I'm, what I'm hoping is, I mean, we've got a lot of things that, that, that could use our time and attention and I just don't want to get, you know, bogged down with determining whether a $3,500 camcorder can be, you know, whether it stays with them or, or with us, but
Yeah. If, if it's helpful, I think the conversations turned to focusing on equipment that they're able to demonstrate was funded with non-city resources and we're kind of zeroing in on that. What I don't know is if additional document review on their part may expand that, that list of equipment, equipment. We haven't had any indication to that effect so far that I'm aware.
And my final question is, I take it that any legal costs that they're incurring will come out of their funds that will be divided between us, however we calculate that.
Correct. And we had some conversations about fund balances, but we, our, our meeting was from 1:00 to 3:30 and we just ran out of time. So that, we agreed that's a topic that we'll need to take up further.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Commission? Any questions or comments from the public? And I don't see anyone's hand raised online, so I will bring it back to the Commission for further discussion or action.
And I apologize. There is one other point that, there, there was also a question raised about personal belongings in the building. And so we talked about, number one, those being de minimis in terms of their value at, at 150 or, or so. And then some, if there's any concern, some affirmation, written affirmation on the part of a person that, that was their personal belonging. So as we talk about discretion for myself and, and designees, that's something for you to deliberate on. But our, our recommendation would be approve what we, we have indicated we feel they've documented and then grant staff the, the authority to approve additional requests if sufficient documentation exists and then also make discretionary determinations on personal belongings.
Mayor, through the determination that SMC has provided adequate documentation to declare the listed items as non-city funded assets and give the city manager authority to approve future requests.
Sir, second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Good luck.
We'll keep you informed.
All right. Item 8.1.
Item 8.1, approve ordinance number 21-11068, changing the zoning classification of the Salina Public Library campus from C4 to PPF.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Dustin Hirsch with Planning and Zoning for the City of Salina. And Jacob, if you could pull up an aerial photo, we will go through some quick background on this property. The subject property that we're talking about is the library portion of the CD County Civic Campus. And the background for the Civic Campus is that the area was originally plat, platted in 1862 and it was redeveloped through an urban renewal project in the 1960s. And when that happened, 8th Street, which did go all the way through, was shut from Elm Street down south to Ash. And all of the houses that were along 9th Street, 8th Street and 7th Street were demolished. And the whole site was redeveloped to what we see today, which is two building structures. One being the library to the north and the CD County Building, which we are in currently to the south. This property was zoned as part of a citywide comprehensive rezoning project in 1977 as C4 Central Business District, which is our downtown zoning district and has remained C4 till this day. The planning staff received in March a sign permit application for an electronic message center sign from the library. They're wanting to put up a digital sign that they could change to inform the public of different resources that they have, different events and activities that they were hosting so that the people could be as part of that review, we identified that because the library property is located in the C4 District, we weren't able to issue that sign permit because the C4 District prohibits electronic message center signs to protect the historic integrity of a lot of the downtown area. So then what happened is staff met with the library and their representatives to talk about different options. During that conversation, one of the options that came up was to potentially rezone the property to a public use district. And the history on that is in 2012, the Planning Commission and City Commission worked together to create a plant, a public use district that would have the intent and purpose of designing and creating a, a district that would accommodate public uses such as government facilities, police stations, fire stations and the like. In 2014, just to the north of the library, fire station number one was rezoned to a, a public use district. And so in that conversation with the library and their representatives, the conversation went, well, we are part of a, a greater campus here. We have a, a CD County Civic Center Campus. What about the south portion? And so what happened is planning staff, along with the library and their representatives, attended a board, the building authority, board of directors meeting, talked about the potential of rezoning the property and the board of directors voted to, in the future, rezone the property. Now that is a application that we are yet to receive. And so this is an independent rezoning request for just the north portion, just the libraries portion of, of the campus. So that's the history of, of where we are. The public use district is a district, as I mentioned, that is designed for public type facilities. And not to say that when the Planning Commission and City Commission were creating that district, that they were thinking specifically of this property, but they were thinking of properties like this. The thing that is different or the main things that are different between the C4 Central Business District and Public Use District is that the Central Business District has zero lot line requirements in terms of building setbacks, where you have buildings that can can take up the entire can take up the entire lot. There are zero setbacks. They have a lot, hundred percent lot coverage. You don't have off-street parking requirements. You don't have landscaping requirements. The Public Use District is different in that it does require off-street parking. It does require building setbacks and it does require landscaping. And so what we did is we actually went and looked at the existing site that we have for the public library and compared it to the requirements of the Public Use District, just to confirm that we weren't creating any non-conformities with a potential rezoning case. And it does, the, the site does meet all of the Public Use District minimum requirements. Looking at the suitability of the site under the existing zoning, the C four district is more of an downtown urban style zoning district, which doesn't really fit the development pattern of the campus. The campus is probably more aligned with the Public Use District and those requirements thereof. Libraries are permitted in the Public Use District and EMC signs, electronic message center signs with changeable copy are also allowed in the Public Use District. So if you were to approve, approve this rezoning request, that would enable the library to potentially obtain a billing or sign permit for that proposed sign. The way that the library functions or, or has functioned the last fifty years would not change with a rezoning request. It would still remain the public library. And so none of that would change. The character of the neighborhood, we have public uses all around the campus. And the public library to the west, we have the Salina Senior Center, which is a public use. To the east, we have the Saline County Health Department. To the north, we have the fire station. And to the south, which is where we are currently located, we have the city county building, which are all public type facilities. Public utilities and services would not be, there would be no proposed changes. There are nothing that would be required to be changed as everything would function as it has. The same with streets and access. The property that is the library portion has ninety-seven off-street parking spaces, which has proved to be sufficient historically, and they have adequate access off of Elm. None of that would change. The future land use plan actually looked forward to this property being a public use. And so if you look at the future land use plan, you will see that it is part of the public, semi-public land use category and the comprehensive plan. In July, on July sixth of two thousand twenty-one, the Planning Commission voted five zero to recommend approval with the findings that you'll find in page nine of your staff report and also within the attached ordinance. The action items or the options that the commission may have is one, the commission could concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve the ordinance changing the zoning classification of this property from C four Central Business District to the Public Use, Public Facilities District on first reading. Option two is the City Commission could refer this application back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration stating that the reasons for its disagreement with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Number three, the City Commission could direct the applicant to resubmit this application as a plan development district, which would require the applicant to submit a site plan for the commission's review and give the commission the opportunity to approve a more restrictive list of permitted uses. And then what the Public Use, Public Facilities District would allow. This would result in this item going back to the Planning Commission. And last, option number four, the City Commission could overturn the recommendation of the Planning Commission and decide that the zoning classification of the subject property should remain in place and make a motion that ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero six eight, changing the zoning classification of the property, not be approved. This require former, affirmative votes. If this option were chosen, the property would be limited to the uses and limitations allowed in the C four district. This would include the continued prohibition of the proposed electronic message center sign. So staff would take any questions that we have. And I believe we do have a representative of the library here. If you have questions for them.
Thank you, Mr. Hers. Any questions for Mr. Hers or for the Salina Public Library?
How is that parcel determined? I guess I always thought that the, the campus was divided in half.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that history. I do know that when the urban renewal project originally took place, the parties were Saline County, the City of Salina, and then U S D three oh five, who also had their administrative offices here originally. I don't have the history of how, how the library was, was dissected or split off from the rest of the Civic Center Campus.
We're sure there's that ninety-seven parking stall. That's right there.
Right, right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hers.
I would mention, just as, as a note that's completely unrelated, but for anyone that's paying attention that, that would like to know, the Planning Commission is having a study session with the Tree Advisory Board on August third to talk about our recommended zero-scape planting list, which are plants that are tolerant to drought conditions as well as our, our soil types and, and climate zones. So for anyone that is interested in those landscaping conversations, we are having one coming up.
Okay. And that's with the Tree Advisory Board?
It's actually going to be the, the Planning Commission and, and members of the, the Tree Advisory Board on August third.
Great.
And we plan to have some outs- outside representatives from K State and, and other people that align themselves with doing research on, on knowing things about plants. So.
Thank you very much.
Otherwise known as horticulture, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? See any online either? So I will bring this back to the commission.
Mayor Hodges, I move that the Salina City Commission concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero six eight, changing the zoning classification of this property from C four Central Business to P P F Public Use, Public Facilities District on first reading.
We have a motion and a second, lots of seconds, to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero six, one one zero six eight on first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. And we'll have the second reading of that on next week. And then the library can proceed with their, with their sign. Item eight point two.
Item eight point two, approve ordinance number two one dash one one zero six seven, changing the zoning classification of Kansas Wesleyan University from R three, C three, centered in P C five to U District. The rezoning request area consists of four lots on the north side of Claflin Avenue.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. These are two companion items, items eight point two and eight point three. With your indulgence, I'm going to address eight point two first, which is kind of the big picture part of this. And so item eight point two deals with the future land use map. Kansas Wesleyan has submitted two applications together. The first one is requesting that the future land use map for the City of Salina be amended to show this property on the north side of Claflin between Highland and Nor- South Ninth Street as public and semi-public instead of the current urban residential and neighborhood center. And that is because that classification more accurately reflects their ownership and planned use of the property. It also reflects their proposal to expand their campus east of Highland Avenue towards South Ninth Street. So as far as the land use map goes, the role of the city commission is, in this case, is to decide what its vision is for the future development on the north side of Claflin Avenue between Ninth Street and Highland. The question's really whether you believe that it's more closely related to the Ninth and Cloud Neighborhood Center extending north or if you think it's more closely related to the Claflin Avenue corridor extending west from the heart of the Kansas Wesleyan campus. The Planning Commission met on July the sixth, and then they felt that this property was more closely related to the Kansas Wesleyan campus to the east. And they approved a motion to recommend that the future land use map be amended to show this property as public, semi-public instead of as urban residential and as part of a neighborhood center. And so that, on item eight point three, comes to you with a recommendation to approve a land use map amendment. And your options would be to concur with the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission and approve ordinance twenty-one eleven oh six six, amending the future land use designation for this property on the north side of Claflin. You could also refer this application back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration, stating the reasons for your disagreement with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Or you could overturn the recommendation of the Planning Commission and decide that the future land use of this property should remain in place as urban residential and neighborhood center. If you reaffirm that boundary, that action alone would not prevent Kansas Wesleyan from converting the building to an art school or constructing a parking lot, but it would indicate a lack of support for Kansas Wesleyan's companion application to rezone this property to a university district. So with that, I would address any questions about the future land use map. The, the four properties that are subject to the land use map amendment are identical to the four properties that they're requesting to rezone.
I think my only question is, are we then going to deal with item eight point three, the land map aspect first and then come back to item eight point two? I'm, I think we might've just gotten them flip-flopped and.
Yeah. I, I think from the terms of the order of the agenda, the reason that the ordinance number was eleven oh six six was anticipation of that being considered first before the zoning request. So it would, from that standpoint, it would make sense to make a determination about the future land use and then move to the zoning question, if that works.
Procedurally, do we need to do anything to, because we had announced item eight point two and the city clerk had read that into the record. So.
Yeah. I don't know if the city attorney has an opinion. If someone were ever looking at the minutes years later, it might be confusing. If he wanted to make a motion to amend and reverse this order, that would probably better put it on record.
Okay. And well, and I don't want to presuppose anyone's vote here, but is there any problem with going ahead and addressing ordinance number twenty-one, addressing the zoning classification change first and then doing the future land use map designation in the order that was printed in the agenda? I mean, could we have the, the staff report on item eight point three and then just take them in the order that they were presented here?
Would it be cleaner if I just moved to reverse the order on our agenda of eight point two and eight point three?
Their second? Motion in a second to reverse the order, putting eight point three before eight point two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we'll deal with eight point three first. Any questions for staff?
I would just note that in your packet, in addition to the land use map, there's a map that shows the properties that have been acquired by Kansas Wesleyan University. And, and they have continued to acquire additional properties between Highland and South Ninth Street, which are reflected on that, that map.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on the future land use designation? Thank you very much, Mr. Andrew. Any questions or comments from the public regarding the future land use designation? Don't see anyone online, so I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor move approval of ordinance number twenty-one dash eleven zero six six, amending the future land use designation of property located on the north side of Claflin Avenue between South Ninth Street and Highland Avenue from urban residential and neighborhood center to public semi-public.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash one one zero six six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Now we'll go ahead and deal with item eight point two, the zoning classification change.
Now that we've looked at the, the big picture and the future vision, this application deals with what the zoning classification should be for four lots on the north side of Claflin between Ninth and Highland. And we have properties addressed as fifteen twelve Highland, which formerly was the site of a single-family dwelling, fifteen eighteen Highland, also the site of a single-family dwelling that's been removed, two twelve West Claflin, also the site of a single-family dwelling that's been removed. And then there's a former service station building that's at the corner of Ninth and Claflin. And the request is to rezone these properties to university district consistent with the rest of the Kansas Wesleyan campus. And the plan for these properties is to convert the building that was the former service station to a building for the Kansas Wesleyan Arts Department. And then there is a plan to construct a surface parking lot at the northwest corner of Highland and Claflin. And the zoning request is to allow those, the conversion of the property to those two uses. What you don't see in the packet is that earlier this year, the Planning Commission approved a plan to construct three student apartments on the south side of Claflin between Highland and Ninth Street. And that is phase one of hope, what they hope to be a future student housing village on, on the opposite side of the street. So the, the parking lot that they're planning to construct at the northwest corner is to help with the current parking as well as future parking for that student village. The plan that they have for the south side doesn't have any off-street parking, so students would need to park on the north side. So this was also considered by the Planning Commission at their July sixth public hearing. The Planning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the zoning change to university district. And this comes to you with options of concurring with the Planning Commission and approving ordinance number twenty-one eleven oh six seven on first reading. You could refer this application back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration, stating your reasons for disagreeing. You could direct that this be resubmitted as a plan development district. Or you could overturn the recommendation of the Planning Commission and decide that the current zoning should remain in place. If that option is chosen, use of the property would be limited to those uses allowed under the current zoning. This would not allow for the art school building or the accessory parking lot. With that, I'd be open to any questions about the zoning side.
One question regarding the buffer, the properties north of this area still, but looks, at least on the east half, are still residential lots, it looks like from that photo. Are there any additional buffer requirements when this property joined or butts a residential property as far as? Just reading through here, it doesn't look like there's a lot of requirement for.
You're referring to the properties that are on Kerwin? Well, that, because the alley intervenes, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be a need for a screening fence, but there would be a need for a, a buffer between the, the parking lot and yeah, the plant, the plan that's submitted does not.
I saw the space there and it just didn't, wasn't registering that that's an alley.
Yeah. So the, the, that alley is actually going to be used for access for the parking lot. And then several of those properties there are owned by Kansas Wesleyan and, and they may have future plans for them other than maintaining the dwellings on the property.
Any other questions for staff? I, I guess my only question would be, is, are, is the alley going to need to have some improvements made to it in order to be used? And will that be Kansas Wesleyan's responsibility or does that look like the city's responsibility?
The, the city's standard on that is if you may use a public alley as part of your parking lot circulation, but if the parking lot is paved, then the alley portion has to be paved as well. So if there's a, if a gravel alley is used to provide. So if there's a, if a gravel alley is used to provide access to that as part of the circulation, then they will have to pave the alley just as they do the parking lot.
Thank you very much, Mr. Andrew.
And that would be Kansas Wesleyan's responsibility, not the city's.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the public? I don't see anyone's hand raised, so I will bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move the commission to concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve ordinance number 2111067, changing the zoning classification of this property from R3 multifamily residence, C3 shopping center, and PC5 planned service commercial to U University District on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11067. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Which takes us to item 8.4.
Item 8.4, approve resolution 21-7972 and set a public hearing day for the creation of a rural housing incentive district.
Mr. Skoll. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioners, as you may remember, we have been in a multi-step process to create an RHID district. Each step creating opportunity for you to make a decision. In May, you adopted Resolution 217955, which recognized that we saw that the district being proposed had the characteristics necessary in order to qualify it for an RHID. We took that map, your resolution, and our city's Live Salina Plan and shared that with Department of Commerce. They then reviewed that and acknowledged that we did, in fact, have the criteria necessary to create the district. From there, the process as designed and outlined in state statute requires that we work through a development agreement and create a development plan for the project that would happen in that RHID district. That brings us to where we're at today. A public hearing needs to be scheduled. So what you have in front of you tonight, Resolution 217972, asks you to schedule that public hearing. At that time, staff will be back to, one, kind of get into the details of that development agreement, which has been attached in this packet. You also have the development plan and the associated materials with those agreements. But we'll go into those in more detail. With that, I will ask, we have been moving quite quickly with this project and there are some unique features. The relationship we have with the county as one of the taxing entities, because this is a property tax increment capturing economic incentive, there's a 25-year term for this that's being requested. And in the conversations we've been having with the county, who does have a veto power in this process, have asked for us, along with our bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell, to look at opportunities for them to possibly use ARPA money, which is the American Rescue Plan funds, as some cash upfront that may offset that financial impact then through taxes over 25 years. And so in doing that, we have looked at the possibility of inner local agreement light. It's not quite as heavy as the one that needs to go to the AG, but would create an agreement that would allow for that cash. The development agreement also highlights that there's a possibility for us, as the City Commission, you, to take cash if we had ARPA money and wanted to put into the project to do that as well. We've been kind of going back and forth and we're hoping we'd have this on last week's agenda, but ended up coming forward to this week's agenda. But what we've realized is we requested the public hearing on August 30th, and that is a fifth Monday. Our math was right. There's a very particular window. This cannot be held any sooner than 30 days and not any farther out than 70 days. So trying to get that to match up with your calendar has been a bit of a challenge. But it looks like between a fifth Monday and the holiday, that would take this item to 9/13. The applicant is aware of this. I'm sure not thrilled and, and we're not exactly excited about it either, but that is the way the math goes because the sixth is that Labor Day Monday and that would take us to 9/13. So with that, staff's recommendation is that you adopt Resolution 217972, setting this public hearing. Copies of the development agreement and all the associated materials are available in the city clerk's office for anyone wishing to view them. I believe representation of the applicant is here. And also, we have a representation from bond counsel here if you have any additional questions. And I'm available for questions.
This hearing would be set up irrespective of ARPA funds being used.
Correct.
And that's not the issue to be discussed then?
Correct. So I guess when I am notifying you, it's, it's a little different than typical RHID, is that we have this, we, the county, have this cash. And so that's part of this discussion and kind of what's held up, getting the development agreement wrapped up, is trying to figure out how that piece fits in. It's pretty unique. But with that, my one recommendation is if you do approve the resolution, is I would kindly appreciate amendment to the resolution setting the public hearing for 9/13. Because otherwise, you won't be here.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Skoll. Any other questions? And just to reiterate, this is just setting the public meeting date.
Correct.
Where we're going to take a look at all the details within the development agreement and how that's constructed.
Correct. You're just setting the public hearing as required by state statute.
Right.
And we will notify the Planning Commission, we notify the school district, and we notify the county during this point, too.
So i- if there is an interested party that, that's aware of the public hearing and wants to see the supporting documentation, they will get the development agreement and the plan. They'll, they'll have that as kind of the starting point of the conversation, but ultimate action will follow the public hearing.
Will the, will the action on September 13th, will that be the final action required for the RHID?
It is, we will have the ordinance in front of you that creates that. But I'm looking at bond counsel. I think there's a 30-day window following that in which is the protest period. So essentially, the county or the school district could come forward.
30 days for notice and we have 30 days from.
So 30 days from now, you hold your public hearing. At that time, you can adopt an ordinance after holding the public hearing that would then create the RHIDs district and that process. But it's not official for another 30 days during that protest period. Following that 30 days, if you have had no issue, then it's, that's it.
Then, then would it come back to us for second reading after the protest period then?
The, the protest period starts and runs after the date of the public hearing. So the ordinance that you would consider following that public hearing would be the final governing body action of the city. Unless it gets protested, in which case, you know, or vetoed by the school or county, in which case, we'd be back to repeal that ordinance. You'd be required to repeal it because of the veto from the school or county. If they do not veto, then there will be, you know, you just do your regular, consider the ordinance, then you have your second reading, and then that's the final governing body action required on that process. And I'm sorry, I'm Dominic Eck with Gilmore and Bell, bond counsel.
Good to have you here. Thank you.
Not introducing myself. Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone.
Seems like we're, you could say we're rushing this, but we're in October. I've always said, if the government gets involved, it takes longer, and here we are. So.
All right, thank you. Any, any questions for the applicants about setting the hearing date? Any questions or comments from the public? If not, bring this back to the commission.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution 21-7972, setting a public hearing date of September 13, 2021, for the creation of a rural housing incentive district.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 217972. And I'm sorry, did your motion include setting the hearing date for?
September 13.
September 13. Okay, good. I couldn't, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Which takes us to other business. Is there any other business that the commission would like to discuss today? If not, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll see you here next week.